The United States of America, in this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deed.
A moment of silence for Terry Stellingworth, who is a resident and business person here in Vernon.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember Cade.
Here.
Councilmember Wetzel.
Here.
Council President Lynch.
Here. Sue, municipal clerk, please, in public office.
No holder of a public office or position shall demand payment or contribution from another holder of a public office or position for the campaign purposes of any candidate or for the use of any political party.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting to public comments.
Bonnie Rubin, Island Lakes, I wrote a statement that I'd like to read. In January of this year, Vernon Township Ordinance 12-01, a salary ordinance which raises the mayors and councils' salaries, was proposed by the council and passed unanimously. I'm a member of the Vernon Taxpayers Association and a committee member of a group of petitioners who seek to oppose our repeal ordinance 12-01. Because Vernon's a Fortner Act municipality, where governed under the optional municipal charter law, statute NJSA 40:69-A-185 of this law says, "The voter shall have the power of referendum, which is the power to approve or reject that the polls, any ordinance submitted by the council to the voters, or any ordinance passed by the council against which a referendum petition has been filed." It goes on to say that "a petition shall be signed by a number of legal voters of the municipality equal in number to at least fifteen percent of the total votes in the cast of the municipality at the last election at which members of the General Assembly were elected." Now, from the statute, our taxpayer group calculated the total number of valid petition signatures required to repeal this ordinance to be four hundred and twenty-six. Our township attorney, Kevin Kelly, however, advised that because the targeted ordinance increased salaries, state statute NJSA 48:9-165 is the applicable statute, requiring seven hundred and seventy-nine valid signatures, which is five percent of the total number of Vernon's registered voters. We believe Mr. Kelly is following the wrong statute as we are in the Fortner Act government, and the statute under the optional municipal charter law is very clear, but that is not the issue right now. In all the petition statutes of the optionable optional municipal charter law, the municipal clerk, and only the municipal clerk, is responsible for the oversight of such petition. Nowhere is it stated that any other council is designated to oversee or advise petition procedures. Why then is Mr. Kelly interjecting himself into the petition proceeding process? After all, it's John Ursin, Mr. Kelly's predecessor, who adamantly conveyed that he was not supposed to be involved in any way, shape, or form in the petition process to change Vernon's form of government.
Thank you.
I'm just more curious as to what might have precipitated the public notice, anything? Is that a state thing, or...? I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah.
What precipitated the public notice? Is that a state mandate or something? Or is that something we did...
Sue brought that to my attention this week. Sue?
Oh, I...oh, sure. Gary, there's something that's handed down.
I have it right here. If you want, I'll...
Go ahead.
Pursuant to the provisions of the state's chief of election official, he's required to send written notice to each town and municipal clerk indicating what we had read. This is supposed to be read once a year to make sure.
Oh, okay.
So it's our...
Don't remember having it seen or heard before, so that's great. Okay, boy. So we're doing something we should be doing.
Came from the county governor, so...
I...I mentioned, I emailed to several of you about how I thought the new website looked good, was working good, it still needs, of course, to be tweaked here and there. One of the things I have a question about, though, is when I went to the agenda for this meeting, the resolutions are there just by title. There's no way that we can look at the resolutions ahead of time. I'm hoping that we will be able to see them as we could in the past, in more than just title. If not, I would suggest that we'd be able to. Similarly, when I looked for past resolutions, I did not see them. They may be hidden somewhere. I did look at the ordinances, but I didn't see resolutions. And those are things that I think should be made available easily, so that we don't have to bother Ms. Nelson any more than we already do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
I'm sorry. Where are you going?
About Gary. I'm interested in learning what the conflict of interest is between the board and the senior citizens at the nutrition site, drafting a letter saying that they are for keeping the homestead non-privatized, or not sold. Because everything that we've had of different people becomes a conflict of interest, conflict of interest. And we don't understand why.
I'm actually not aware of this situation. I'm not sure what letter you're referring to, sir.
Because there are other mayors, there are other nutrition sites that are drafting letters saying frankly, frankly, nutrition sites, majority of seniors support keeping the homestead.
This council, or this administration, has not taken a position on that matter.
Pardon?
This council and this administration has not taken a position, and it's my understanding that nobody...
It's not even brought to our attention, I hear.
You're referring to a letter. I'm just not sure what letter you're referring to.
Hey, do it.
I'm not sure what letter you're referring to, to be honest with you. But we, at this point, this administration has not taken a position on that.
I hope you can look into it.
Thank you.
In support of the exchange of this town.
I'm the person that requested the letter from the mayor. At first, I went to the nutrition site, and they told me that they had to go and ask someone else. Eventually, I went to the mayor, and came down to the mayor.
Excuse me, can you please state your name?
My name is Krista Gary. I live in San Siro in Vernon.
Thank you.
Vernon resident, and I'm on the committee to save the homestead.
Okay.
I know a lot of people are under the impression that it's sold, it's not sold yet, and we are trying to fight that from happening. Now, the other day, we had a leisure club meeting in the senior citizen building, and we had many, all the seniors were in favor of keeping the homestead the way it is, and not privatizing it. And Mr. Varell was there, and he gave a talk, and he's a hundred percent behind us, and he thinks that this should never be done.
Krista, I think you have some, maybe some facts and figures you might want to share with us?
I don't have them with me, but I have a little...
Well, it's my understanding that, as it stands now, something like forty percent of those who apply are accepted by the homestead, and when the privatization takes place, ten percent of the applicants would be accepted.
Right, right.
When you couple that with the article that we saw in the New Jersey Herald, thirty-six percent of the population of Sussex County falls below the poverty level. And it seems to me it would be prudent to make sure that the homestead continues in its operation as it is.
I don't have a vested interest. I don't have anyone there at the homestead. I don't have any friends there. I'm just doing this because it's, I think it's the right thing to do. And I think everyone should... Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, good evening. My name is Lissa Smiden. How are you? I'm here off the cuff. I wasn't prepared to come tonight, but I was just at the field allocation meeting with all the heads of all the organizations for all the sports groups in town, and we're getting ready to allocate a field for the year. They had mentioned that on its next agenda was the snack bar concession areas for the field usage. And as a parent of three children that have come through this town, as an active volunteer in this town, I would just like to ask that you consider allowing the sports... My kids are grown, and I'm out of the youth program, so at this point, it's moot for myself. But I do know, being the active volunteer that I was, that we did raise quite a bit of money to help fund the non-budgeted items that the youth organizations do need, since they are pretty much run by themselves. They're self-budgeted through the fees that the kids and the parents pay, and then whatever can be fundraised can be then helped for whatever other expenses that there are. I would just like to say that it's very important that these groups still at least, you can privatize and concession out the food itself, but don't take away the ability for the groups to fundraise extra money that they may need, so the burden is not put on the parents to come up with the extra money that is necessary to run these programs. They are costly programs to run, and they really do need the extra money to offset what parents may be having a difficult time. A lot of parents are, at this point, struggling for bills, and they don't have the extra money for the kids to play their sports. Well, guess what? The parents that fundraise and earn that extra money through selling baked goods, food items, drinks, whatever it may be that the groups come up with collectively to raise the money for, I think it's important. So I just wanted to express my opinion as an active volunteer in this town that you'd consider at least, go ahead and concession it out if you find that necessary, but let the groups be allowed to raise some of the money that they need. Thanks, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public would like to speak?
Deep Benz, I would like to introduce to you Mosquito Control Coalition. The purpose of our organization is to educate the residents of Sussex County in the matter of mosquito infestation prevention. The MCC members are actively researching the best ways to protect our population from the unpleasant and dangerous mosquito biting, especially children and seniors. We are also concerned for the well-being of visitors that come to our beautiful country for relaxation. It is our best interest to provide them with a safe environment to enjoy their recreation, so that they leave with pleasant memories, recommend us to their friends, and come back again. The tourist industry is the future of our county, and we should consider all the ways to support its growth. The MCC is cooperating with Sussex County Forests in the matter of an aerial treatment of the wetlands and off-road trail. We are hoping that Sussex Bank will sponsor the publication of flyers that will contain information regarding the prevention and treatment of mosquito infestation. Sussex County Mosquito Control Coalition is requesting active support from the Vernon Township Mayor and Council. All living creatures are part of the environment. Our organization recognizes the necessity of the mosquito population, which is a food source for our winged friends. We are supporting an aerial mosquito lather treatment with bacteria in the form of bacteria activated by moisture, and controls the mosquito population before it becomes a life-threatening infestation. This treatment is least intrusive for the environment and the human population, and is affected on all hundred and seventy-eight types of mosquito. Blood poisoning and other infestation infections due to mosquito bites are especially dangerous to our senior residents. In the spring of 2011, Sussex County Mosquito Control failed to part its funds and signed contracts with pilots. We have four allowed by EPA treatments per whole year. To prevent infestation, the three should be done before June 1st. We all have terrible experience. When you look at the Sussex County Mosquito Control maps, you will find Vernon Circle as a hot spot for mosquito infestation. Sussex County Mosquito Control failed in 2011 to protect residents of this county. We will not allow this to happen again. Vernon Township does not have Health Department to supervise Sussex County Mosquito Control, to make sure that everything is done to protect our residents. I would like to request that the Mosquito Control Coalition is adopted by the township as an advisory committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to close public comment? Motion by Councilmember Rizzuto, second. And Councilmember Cade, second. More favor? Okay. Prove a minute. I gather everyone received their packets. The amendment, first one is the amendment to the regular session minutes, February 28, 2011. And I think you need to separate that one from the other two. The second one is the regular session minutes. We'll go over on each one. For the amendment to the regular session minutes. I'll make a motion. I'll second the motion. And I'm willing to be voted on this. Second it.
Right. That's it?
Okay, please call the roll.
Are you serious?
You gotta lighten up a little, will you? Yes. Yes, yes, Sue, yes.
I abstain.
Never told a bad joke twice. Okay, regular session minutes, January 23, 2012. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Rizzuto, second. Second by Councilmember Dunn. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunn.
Yes.
Councilmember...
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Exchuck.
Yes.
Council President Lynch.
Yes. Okay, this is the special work session minutes for February 4th. Consider whether you'd like a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Wetzel, second.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Rizzuto. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunn.
Yes.
Councilmember Cade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto.
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel.
Yes.
Council President Lynch.
Yes. Okay, for consent agenda, I'll go through them, and... Okay, Resolution 12-35, approval of the bills list. Please note the revised version in its effect. Resolution 12-36, this resolution rescinds Resolution 12-34, and at the auditor's request, it's referenced in the 2012 resolution instead of 2011. Resolution 12-37, front balance transfer. This is at the auditor's request to correct the above statement, at error, rather, I'm sorry. Resolution 12-38, endorsing submission of 2011 tonnage grant application. This grant encourages local recycling efforts and requires annual reports on what and how much was collected. Resolution 12-39, it authorizes the procurement of a concession at the parks. This allows township to contract for a concession at the parks. 12-40, this authorizes the competitive contracting for award concessions. Allows the purchasing agent to receive proposals for other concessions at the park. 12-41 is to authorize contracts with Morris County Co-op. This allows us to use vendors already vetted for the contracting for 2012, so we don't have to go out for bid that would take a lot of extra time. 12-42, this authorized agreement with New Jersey Office of Clean Energy for the DPW. This continues with the energy-saving measures from a federal energy grant for township properties. 12-43, award the contract with Redco products or contains for the DPW. This allows the township to award a contract despite receiving no other bids. After two attempts, no other bids were received, and so by using the lowest quotation for the dumpsters, we'll be able to do this. Resolution 12-44, this rescinds Resolution 12-23, due to an error in the calculation on a property by the court that this court of tax court judgments on 2010 taxes. 12-45, tax refunds, tax court judgment for 2010 taxes, removes the incorrect property but authorizes to refund for all others. Resolution 12-46, authorize Vernon Youth Soccer to hold the soccer tournament. This grant's commission to hold the tournament sets the fate and authorizes temporary signage. Resolution 12-47, authorize contracts to state contract vendors. Like 12-41, this allows us to use vendors already vetted for contracting for 2010 without holding a bidding procedure. 12-48, authorize change order number one to the KME Corporation for the Island Lakes Fire Department tanker, pumper, it says here it's a tanker. Several items are needed to refurbish the pumper that were unforeseen in the original assessment and specification. Resolution 12-49... Hold me for a second. 12-49, award contract to Global Equipment Company for DPW hoppers. Like 12-43, no bids were received after two attempts, but this company had the lowest quote for these self-dumping hoppers. 12-50, authorize lease agreement with the county for the nutrition site. This renews our annual lease for the use of the seniors center for space to offer meals to seniors at seventy-five per day. Is that seventy-five cents a day?
No, people.
People.
I believe it's two dollars a day.
Two dollars a day, okay. Resolution 12-51, award contract to Baltimore Sanding Ground for 2012. This vendor's cost is lower than that through the county cooperative's list of vendors. Does anybody have any questions? I need you to, if you're going to do a consent agenda, please remove 12-48. For a separate vote?
I would like to remove 39 and 40 for a separate vote, because I think the issue is brought up, and maybe there's a little discussion before we vote on it.
Might as well remove 12-40 also.
Well, he's damned to say 12-40.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Does anybody else have any? Okay, with all... All resolutions except for 12-39, 12-40, and 12-48, can I have a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Councilmember Cade, second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dunn. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunn.
Yes.
Councilmember Cade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto.
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel.
Yes.
Council President Lynch.
Yes. For Resolution 12-48, do you have a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Councilmember Cade, second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rizzuto. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunn.
Yes.
Councilmember Cade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto.
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel.
Yes.
Council President Lynch.
I abstain. Okay. Resolution 12-39, authorizes the procurement of a concession at the parks. Now, Jerry informed us that this was being done improperly for some time, and that we received notice?
Yes, the operation of concession stands at municipal parks are subject to the Competitive Contracting Statute Title 40A 11-4.1. Paragraph J explicitly mentions concession stands. I saw input from the state of New Jersey, the Deputy Director of Local Government Services confirmed that, and it's just, that is the way that concession stands have to be, you know, put out on public properties in the state of New Jersey.
Does it preclude fundraising activity?
Certainly, the athletic programs are allowed to do other things that they want. You know, it's not in the best interest of the township to have, you know, the winning vendor, you know, being competed against on our parks. But it's certainly something that I don't see why they couldn't work that out with whoever the vendor was. Just to talk about competitive contracting a little bit, it's a little different from the, you know, the public bidding process. You know, in this case, a potential bidder, someone who wants to operate our concession stand, you know, they would submit a price to us on what they would pay us to use that for the prescribed period of time. Theoretically, the person who submits the highest price would be the winning bidder. However, I say bidder, the winning vendor. However, under competitive contracting, and that's not always the case, you have a committee within the township staff, which is made up of the Director of Community Development, the purchasing agent, and myself, who can determine who the most qualified, you know, contractor is. So just because someone happens to submit, I'm gonna make up a number, say $10,000, will pay us for six months, doesn't mean we have to take them. If somebody else submits a bid for maybe $7,000, and we feel that they're, you know, better equipped to handle, we have, we can do that as well. So we're not, our hands aren't tied, it's a little more flexible. But obviously, you would award any contract before it went out. You know, time is of the essence here to some extent, because we have a pretty large tournament, which you approved in a prior resolution, coming up at the end of March. Again, as far as whether or not the athletic programs can fundraise, you know, I don't see what would prohibit them, but I think it's important to know that, you know, we have a vendor that's selling, I don't know, hot dogs. Certainly, we couldn't allow someone else to be selling hot dogs in the bottom of the field, competing with a vendor, because in that case, what vendor would want to, you know, submit a bid if that was going to be the case? But most of these people work in volunteer activities anyway. I don't see why that couldn't be worked out. And it's something we can talk to any potential vendor about as we're going through the vetting process of anybody who puts forth a bid.
It raises the question of other events that take place down there. Would this preclude, for instance, the Historical Society from its pow-wow day from selling hot dogs?
No.
I am the chief chef.
Yes.
And it seemed to me, for National Night Out, where the mayor is the chief chef.
Right. There for sure, the stand gets the dogs.
I just know we compete against each other. I can see this becoming a problem already.
Not at all.
No, I want to make sure, being a fundraiser in several organizations, that their efforts aren't precluded, and somehow work out an integration of the concession and the competitive bidding.
Of course.
With the people who are using it. Otherwise, I suppose we'd end up with a boycott.
Very specific, this language in the proposal that says there are days... Very specific, uh, there's language in the proposal that says there are days, like a National Night Out, like a pow-wow, like a Vernon Day, where obviously they're going to be other vendors there as well doing different things. And that's in the contract and that's certainly allowed. Uh, but you know, we can't have a situation where during a, I'm not going to pick a sport, I'm a sport, I don't want to sound like I'm picking one, a sport is playing a game on one of the fields and the vendor's out, you know, pretzels and sodas, and then somebody down below is selling pretzels and soda. Certainly we couldn't allow that to happen. But for those big events, yes, those.
Suppose, from, concern that I have is suppose during one of those events, there's a cake sale or a bake sale or a cookie sale along on the side of the field. The vendor may be selling, you know, cookies, packaged cookies and candies. How do you resolve on some, how do you resolve something like that without creating a problem?
I think if a athletic program or a nonprofit program wants to do something like that, they're, they're just going to have to work it out with whoever, you know, wins. Kind of recession. I mean, it's, it's tough to put every possible scenario in a proposal to say, well, sometimes they can sell cupcakes, sometimes they can sell a bottle of water. You know, I just, I think it would scare people away. I'm saying that's not be worth it, I'm going to be having to compete, you know, for the limited times we have it. Whereas, you know, a lot of these guys, a lot of the local townsfolk, maybe they have a swimming pool, that's open Monday to Friday. You know, so they're there, all of that, we're at a little bit of a disadvantage in one of the communities because we're doing a certain time right after the, you know.
Jerry, could you just educate us, what was the catalyst that started all this? It seems a little unusual. Is this just the time of year or?
Yeah, this is the time of year when we would be getting ready for the athletic seasons. And it came up and, you know, I had some prior knowledge of this myself, just from past professional experience. And, you know, I saw some, like I said, I saw some guidance, you know, from someone, one, one of the most trustworthy people in local government purchasing in the state of New Jersey, who, you know, confirmed that, you know, this is a competitive contracting type of situation.
I certainly understand the dilemma that parents have when raising funds for their children. And if we're going to do this correct, it's, it's all of our fields, not just the people at the concessions and not just the fundraisers. And I think that our children are very good imitators of us all. And I think it's important that we act in an appropriate manner here and address the situation when two organizations, when the recession, whoever gets the bid and whoever is the fundraiser for a nonprofit, they need to work together in front of the children too. And that needs to come from us as well.
You know, certainly, you know, all these, any of these companies that are professionals that just have worked with these volunteer or these athletic organizations. So they have the experience doing that. Um, certainly doesn't preclude a local business from deciding that they want to, you know, put a bid in or a nonprofit in town, they want to put a bid in, you know. So tell them to everybody. And again, we're going to analyze it, you know, price is a factor, but it's not.
I have, I have no problem with it. You're going to have the appropriate means of evaluating the submissions of the bids. But as I look at the bids, you're probably looking at guaranteed minimums or at least some upfront money that is going to be included in the bid.
Yeah, it's required upfront.
So I really think, without having to ask the council to get involved so deeply, that you really need to try and develop some way of being able to resolve these questions that I think are going to arise with a competitive situation. Putting myself in the, in the shoes of somebody who is a concessionaire, who's made the bid, been awarded the bid, and guaranteed a percentage or whatever upfront money. You know, now if somebody else comes in, that's money out of their pocket. And how you're going to handle that is going to be difficult. So I would ask that you kind of look at that and see if you could, most yourself, you look at some type of a working document or at least a working, uh, protocol that you could apply to this to avoid any problems in the future. Otherwise, I see this coming back to us within a year or four months.
Yeah, and just if I can add on to that, Jerry, probably conversely, my thoughts around this are, how do, how do we balance, you know, the fundraising for, for these families? I mean, you talk about integration, but I just wonder what the impact really truly is for all the families and all the fundraising that goes on throughout the year. Is it measurable or is it, is it just, I mean, how constant is it going on? Or, you know, what are the offsets as a business person? It'd be difficult for me to think that whoever's fundraising isn't competing with me in some way because I'm here to make money. But at some time, what's the balance?
The value of this system is that, you know, we can talk to these potential vendors prior to awarding the contract. Uh, but you're absolutely right, both here, I mean, you know, it has to weigh in favor of the person who's willing to pay us to use our field. I mean, there's just no question about that. It has to. You know, a vendor or a local store or a nonprofit is not going to put upfront money if they think they're going to be competed against on a regular basis. It's just, you know, so that, that will absolutely play into our factor. But we will, you know, again, interview all the potential.
Will this preclude these groups from bidding?
No, not at all.
One other thought, gentlemen, if I may. Um, you certainly could direct the administration to use the profit from the concession to offset some of the needs of those families who can't afford for their children to register within our recreation programs. You certainly have the opportunity to do that. Um, just to leave the thought.
Anybody got any other questions?
So, what are we truly voting on at this point, so I'm clear?
We're voting on the procurement of a concession.
Well, you're, you're voting on going out. Right. Authorizing us two things, but one is to allow for competitive contracting because that's a separate resolution. And two is to allow us to go out and receive these bids. You will also be voting at a future meeting on the winning vendor. So at this time, you're just allowing us to go out, but at some point, the vendor is going to really vote. And the reason for this is obviously those contractors.
Basically, we're setting up the mechanism.
Well, I hope that somehow, um, meeting with these groups and agreement is worked out that allows for both activities. It just seems to me absolutely necessary.
So not voting this wouldn't mean compliance with, with the state statute, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, you wouldn't open a concession stand if you didn't have, if you didn't do this, I mean, to be honest with you. Or we would be in the basis as a township of rocking a concession stand, but I would, you know, which I don't think anybody.
Eddie, if I, if I can just clarify that, I, in reading 12-40, you don't have a choice about this. This is, 12-40 says that we're going to comply with New Jersey statutes. Well, we are going to, um, and that's not subject to a vote. And unfortunately, the DCA, um, has told us what we have to do and this is not a matter of choice.
Right, that's the reason why I have a question.
So if you want, right, if you want to vote, vote, but it doesn't make any difference. Because, because, uh, Jerry, to my surprise, I've got this answer from the DCA. Have you got?
Well, it does have an effect, and I think Jerry spoke to it, and it may be adversarial, but if the council tells us not to do this, we'll close the concession stand.
Oh, well.
That's the alternative.
Right, that's true too.
That's the alternative. And that would leave the organizations to do as they saw fit in fundraisers. But it seems to me that the community has spent an awful lot of money building that concession stand and that, and that is, and that is, uh, still.
Can we restrict it to someone who's local, like local business, local resident?
Don't let us do that. It's great that it could. It'd be written, it would double. But again, remember, there is a committee that will review all of the bids that come in, which means that committee does have the opportunity to apply judgment as to who can do the job best.
Was there any other questions?
I make a motion.
Motion made by council member Rizuto to, uh, Cage, I'm sorry. Second?
Second.
Second by council member Rizuto. Okay, uh, any other questions? This is for resolution 12-39 and 12-40.
So again, just not to be opinionated in that case. So we're, we're voting for getting this, for them to go out to bid. That's what we're voting.
Competitive contracting, don't use the word bait. It's not necessary.
That's okay.
It's a little different. Just want to be clear.
Okay, please call the roll.
Council member Dunn.
No.
Council member Cage.
Yes.
Council member Rizuto.
Yes.
Council member Wetzel.
Yes.
Council president Lynch.
Yes. Okay, at this time, Mayor, do you have anything you would like?
I sure do, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to start my report this evening to report to the entire council that, uh, through the efforts of, um, the firm of Porter Culver at all, we have in fact taken title to several more parcels of land. And we are now at 80 that we own. And we will be in fact organizing a sale of those parcels to get them back on the tax rolls. One in particular I'd like to call out to the council this evening. It's been the subject of, um, questions, concerns, news, uh, features on some of the TV programs. And I'm referring to 14 Pine Street East, where there's been an abandoned.